Hi, I live in the North End and I'm a frequent rider of bus number 63 and 68. I guess my first thing is a statement or question about route number 68. You stated in your timeframe that September 13th, I believe, that would be things would go into, the changes would go into place. But I read a thing on your website, May 23rd through, excuse me, I'm a little nervous, October 31st, that the free bus routes 67 and 68 are under the, well, anyway, I'm thinking that they're already paid for, so there would not be any loss to you. And that runs through October 31st. And then my second thing is just a quick question. If routes number 68 are eliminated and the flex number 231, that basically leaves us without any transportation to those who utilize and need the DHS service in Middletown. And that's it. Thank you.
So, my name is Christopher Bove and I am here to express my concerns about the tremendous and disproportionate impact these cuts are going to have for residents of Aquinic Island and South County in particular. A little bit of context about me, I am, I was born legally blind and I have used Ripta as my primary means of transportation for all of my adolescent and adult life, especially growing up here on the island where our transit system is pretty okay in comparison to the rest of the state. But these cuts that are coming are going to harm the island and South County so much more than other areas of the state. Particularly what I'm concerned about is the elimination of Sunday service on the 63. You know, working families on the island typically only have the weekend to do their shopping and run all the errands they need to do. And so eliminating one of those weekend days available to that segment of the population is very concerning to me. Coupled with the fact that a lot of the people on this island work those jobs on the weekends and will now be without transportation to get there. Secondly, I am extremely concerned about how these cuts are going to impact the University of Rhode Island. The bus route 64 is the only direct connection between Aquinic Island and URI. And I'm sorry to say, but having two round trips a day is not helpful. You know, at that point, you might as well go ahead and eliminate the route. No one's going to be able to use it for the purpose of going to school. So I'm very concerned about that. And finally, the route 60, I understand that on paper that route goes, would go every 60 minutes, which doesn't sound that bad. But when you consider that the 60 alternates between East and West Main Road, that will create wait times of up to two hours if you're someone who needs to travel to East or West Main Road specifically. And finally, to any elected officials who may be listening, I am absolutely abhorred that we have been placed in this position. And one day soon, your constituents are going to come to you and ask why you allowed them to lose access to this service. And in a state with a $14 billion budget, I would encourage you to have a better answer than we couldn't afford it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenny Wu and I'm from Providence. I am here to speak out against these catastrophic service cuts. These changes will devastate riders who rely on transit as well as the workers who help keep it moving. I live near the R line and Route 1, which are both facing frequency cuts. But today I want to draw attention to a few other routes that deserve a closer look. Route 14, I recommend that Ripta keep the weekend service so that Jamestown and East Greenwich can still have service. The West Bay and South County Transit is already being heavily impacted. Please also consider keeping the Narragansett branch of the route. As for Route 69, please consider keeping it to provide, to continue providing service to Wakefield, Peace Dale, and Narragansett. Flex 203 service is like a ride-on-demand service that's currently really popular, so it's been difficult for me to schedule a ride on the app. Therefore, getting rid of Route 69 service in South County as well as 14 service to Narragansett, which is, I think, would shift demand over to 203, which would possibly overwhelm the service. For Aquinic Island, I would recommend keeping Route 68 and Flex 231. You know, Route 68 doesn't just go to like First Beach, but it also like goes to the DHS office in Middletown. And in addition to that, Route 9X, which serves the northwest part of Rhode Island like in Chapachut or Pasco, even though it does not run that often, but it provides a crucial link to those areas. And furthermore, I would like to recommend keeping in the Blackstone Valley area, Route 71 weekend service that connects Cumberland and Pawtucket, as well as Route 75, which connects Lincoln to Pawtucket. Those are only one of the few options for Blackstone Valley. And those are all the concerns I have today. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Peter. I'm a senior citizen here just from up the road. I use the 63 route quite often. A change of five minutes in its time seems to be a bit unusual. I admire all these bus drivers, even trying to keep on a schedule is difficult enough as it is. If they have extra time, why could they not change the route to hit the other shopping center on the East Main Road and up to West House? I also would like to question the removal of their services on Sunday. Sunday's routes are limited as it is. That is one of the reasons a lot of people do not take that bus. You cannot, and anybody trying to go to a church in that morning, there is no service, only after 10:00 in the morning. I just wish they could take a closer look at the 63 route. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I would just like to first express my appreciation to Ripta. These are, when you're facing an eight-figure budget deficit, it is understandable and recognized that these are some very, very difficult decisions that are being made. And to the extent that Ripta is working as much as possible to kind of nibble around the edges and gain efficiencies where they can be gained, notwithstanding some of the very valid comments that other speakers have made and will make today, I think it's commendable that, for the most part, the complete reductions in routes appears to have been minimized to the max extent possible. So I personally, I truly believe that Ripta is applying as much empathy as possible into this process. What I would like to focus on today, and there are many things that I could speak to, specifically Route 68, which takes residents from the inner part and the northern areas of Newport to Easton's Beach and the YMCA and the Newport Human Services, I'm sorry, the Department of Human Services in Middletown, as well as other areas on that side of Easton's Pond. The complete reduction in that service would run contrary to future goals that the city of Newport and the town of Middletown have for the expansion of, or the renovation of Easton's Beach. There could be some potential, we don't know yet, but there could be some potential loss of parking as a result of our efforts to build up the dune system there. And so we are literally encouraging folks in the future and now to use public transportation to get to and from the beach. Likewise, the YMCA of Newport County is interested in expanding its footprint and its services, not condensing them. And so the increased availability of bus service to that location will also be critical to their efforts as well, especially for some of our underprivileged groups that rely on Ripta's service in that particular route segment. So I would just like to ask Ripta to consider that it is very difficult, we know this from history, it is very difficult to restore a service that has been canceled as opposed to adjusting a service that exists. So the complete elimination of Route 68 would be very, very difficult to come back from. And looking at some of the future goals the city and the town have in terms of Easton's Beach and the YMCA, I would ask that Ripta take a second look at potentially determining some ways in which at least aspects of this service can be maintained. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Randall Rose. I'm from Providence. I'm a member of the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition, which is one of the bus rider organizations that's trying to fight these cuts. Unfortunately, the state leaders did not give Ripta enough money. The budget they gave Ripta was $10 million short of what was needed to keep the bus service going. Ripta really does not want to make these cuts, but there's just no way with the budget they've been given to avoid very serious cuts. And in the end, the decision, like most decisions, is going to be made by the top leaders in the State House. So I've been passing out flyers to people. I think everybody maybe has got them. What really is going to make a difference is making sure the politicians hear about it. Because if you just make comments in this room and just send your comments to Ripta, that's not going to be enough to change anything. So fortunately, a lot of the elected officials realize that this bus service is essential, that people are going to really suffer if these cuts go through. A lot of the rank and file, state reps and state senators know it's important, not all of them, but a lot of them do. But the top leaders in the State House are still trying to do these cuts. And that is the way they work. Even if they know something has public support, they try experimenting with cutting it, they see if they can shortchange the budget, and they see if there's a backlash. And if there's a lot of outcry and backlash, then they restore the money. But if you don't get much backlash or outcry, then they'll keep the cuts and they'll continue cutting and they may cut more in future. So it's really important to reach out to your elected officials. On that flyer, I gave the office phone numbers for the office of Governor McKee, House Speaker Joe Shikarchi, Senate President Valerie Lawson. Please call them. And also contact your state rep and state senator. I gave you a link where you can find their phone numbers. And make sure that when you talk to your state rep and state senator, what they need to do is, the state reps need to talk to the Speaker of the House, the state senators need to talk to the Senate President, they need to be telling these state leaders, we really need to get these funds moved in there so that there won't be these cuts. And there's lots of ways to find the money, but it depends on how many people speak out. So please ask your friends to speak out about this. And there are a number of good bus rider organizations in this state. I see people here from Save Ripta, which is another good organization. I see people here from Rhode Island Transit Riders, which is another good organization. It does help to join these bus rider organizations so that the politicians will listen to us more. So thanks, everybody who spoke, but please don't blame Ripta. Just make sure we, people hear that the politicians are responsible and the politicians need to change. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Skiin. I live in Portsmouth, Rhode Island, and I'm here representing several of the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board organizations across Aquinic Island, where we have been advocating for safer bus stops as well as routes that encourage the use and reduce vehicle, motor vehicles. I understand, I'm on the Portsmouth School Committee, and I have seen the increasing cost of transportation for school buses, statewide transportation, and I do understand the rising costs. But with, even with our state proposed budget cuts, I think the priorities should be reassigned and really increase support for Ripta. This is critical, especially for emergency situations where we need to evacuate Aquinic Island and allow for all residents to safely get off the island, even if they don't have personal vehicles. I also feel that all residents of all socioeconomic levels and all abilities should have full access around the island for work and pleasure and school. Lots of students now throughout the state are using public transportation to get to service-based learning opportunities in order to meet ride education mandates. So when I am speaking on behalf, my priorities are that Route 68, which is a very important route because the traffic situation in that area is already exacerbated all year round. And by encouraging the use of public transportation, you can reduce the vehicle backup right behind Easton Beach, as well as access DHS Office and the Boys and Girls Club, I'm sorry, the YMCA, which I have two children and I encourage the use of that center as a really successful community center for the entire island. I think that allowing students and everyone from the North End to get to Easton Beach with these extreme heat events we're experiencing due to climate change is very important. We live on an island and we need to have safe access to recreation and employment kind of along that Easton route, which City Manager did make the reference. We are making plans for the future of Easton Beach as well as the YMCA, and those are two vital resources for the entire Aquinic Island. I've agreed with a lot of the previous comments about Flex 231, as well as the successful use of Route 65X and encouraging students to be able to go to URI without a personal vehicle. There's lots of commuter students from this island who successfully have been going to URI and graduating from URI, but service cuts making it harder for them to attend will be devastating. That includes Route 64 as well. And I agree with the previous comments that the elimination of Sunday service on Route 63 along Middletown and the middle, along Broadway and the Middletown shops is not only hard for working families that need to get their errands done on a Sunday, but as well as for people attending faith-based places of worship on a Sunday. That's a lifeline for all types of people to connect to community and having access on Sunday in order to meet these needs are very important. Again, I encourage our elected officials to prioritize Ripta's budget and restore these service cuts. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Wilm. I'm a URI graduate student who is living in Narragansett during the school year intentionally because I've been, a lot of other climate scientists wanted to have access to public transportation. But it's not just that we want to lower our environmental impact. There are many URI students who have already made housing plans, who have already paid, who have already committed to significant parts of their educational career who are losing access to essential services. I know a lot of people who, because URI has very limited parking on campus, both for residents, a significant amount of resident students, and I think it's 36% of our students live on campus, do not have cars on campus, and commuter parking is getting more and more limited for the construction of our new Fine Arts Center and new dorm buildings going in place. I know a significant number of students who cannot access all of their healthcare on campuses, our pharmacy services are limited, even I have not been able to get some healthcare on campus, so had to go off campus. So I know many people that relied on Route 69 to get to their prescriptions, to get to healthcare appointments because they were not able to have cars on campus or couldn't afford it. I know people that use that route for jobs who are in the Talent Development Program, which allows low-income students to go to URI. I've had roommates that even with the limited bus 69 times, they would go into work over an hour early before their shift would start, but that was their only way to work off of campus is how limited student work hours are. URI students are only allowed to work 20 hours per week for the school, and most of those jobs are about 15 hours per week. If a student, including my roommate, loses access to that bus going onto campus and has to, say, with the limited 203 service in the flex zone, they have to pay for Ubers to get to campus on time to work. That is maximum $300 they can make per week, that is minimum $100 per week that they now have to spend on transportation because after plans have already been made, we have lost access for URI students to use public transportation to get to class, to get to work, and to get to other essential services that they need. Cutting this on September 13th, after almost every student rental property company has already required us to pay over 60% of our rent already, cutting this this late leaves students in a hardship position and people who do not already have other students as a lifeline with personal vehicles are in financial hardship and cannot get to work, cannot get to class. This limits access for people on Bay Campus and it makes the student parking issues even worse. I understand that, oh, this is a budget issue within Ripta, but from a state perspective, this is making public education in Rhode Island even more inaccessible to many students. The most common reason I hear from prospective students that they don't want to go to URI, it's not even the location itself, it's that they're concerned that'll be inaccessible. And having limited flex access for the 203 on weekends, which is already very limited in the evenings when many people would try to work, having only two buses per day into Newport, less times for the 66 and no 69 bus means that most students are stranded on campus unless they have a personal vehicle. Thank you.
I'm going to touch on something, not immediately transit-related, but circle back, which is that in the next hour, there will be an announcement out of Brown Health that the birthing center is not being closed. Now, this is great news force, but I want to speak to why it's important. Our major institutions in this state, from government to quasi-public organizations like Ripta to our healthcare network, are facing extreme constraints right now. And what may seem like trimming will be a constant until we reverse this trend through the types of advocacy that we heard about earlier. What is important to learn from the news that we have out of Brown Health today is the power of your story in helping government and institutions prioritize what they should be focusing on and what matters. And when it comes to resources like Route 68 or the flex route through Newport, the reason these are so important to our community is that these are the resources that ensure that middle and working-class families that make this community work continue getting to work and continue living healthy and productive lives. So thank you for coming out to advocate to these routes, to Ripta. Thank you for listening to our voices. We are hopeful that in your consideration of future adjustments to routes and the efficiencies that are necessary, that it doesn't get balanced on the backs of working and middle-class families. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Irene Glasser. I live in Newport and I've been working as a professor at Brown University for the last 11 years, and I often take Ripta. I'm especially grateful for it during the bad weather. And I support everybody's comments about, you know, the seriousness of elimination of routes or times. But I just want to say that since I've lived here for 21 years, I'm rather surprised that a lot of my friends who are my age, more or less, really don't consider Ripta. And I'm thinking about people who are aging and maybe really shouldn't be driving or don't really want to be driving. And I am concerned about increasing ridership of Ripta and how that's done, which I would think also has an economic impact if you increase your ridership. I'm personally from New York City and grew up with public transportation all the time. And when we moved to Rhode Island, I was very happy that I happened to live a half a block from a Ripta stop and use it. And I'm very grateful for it. So I know this is not exactly maybe pertinent to the cuts, but I just want to be a very strong supporter of Ripta and say that I personally appreciate it and will continue to use it. Thank you very much.
Hi, Marjorie Simmons, Newport, Rhode Island. And I'm a senior citizen and retired, and I ride the bus. I love that bus. And I'm talking about 68. I have met so many wonderful people, especially in the summertime because there's families from around here that don't have maybe cars. And they're on the bus with the kids and they're all excited, they have their pails. And I see them going down, because sometimes I ride the bus all the way around, and then I see them coming back, all full of sand, they love it. But one of the reasons I ride the bus and I like it is because we're trying to cut down on traffic in Newport in the summer. It's a total nightmare, I don't know if you know, well, I'm sure you do. But I volunteer at the library, and when I get to the library, I can't find a parking place. It's a nightmare because everybody in the world parks at the library, whether they go there or not, it's an open lot. But I get off the bus, because I take 68, I get off up by the Elks Club, by the art museum, and I walk down to the library. And then when it's time for me to come home, I walk back up and take the bus home. And I just really love it. It's very nice. By the way, that bus services the library for the people who live around here who might not get there otherwise. It also, on the return route going down Marlborough, stops near City Hall and not too far from the courthouse. So there's a lot of areas it services. It goes way up in Middletown by the Human Services Building, and it's a great way to see Newport and not have to drive. I've got my family doing it, so there's a few less drivers down there in Newport. But I hope that route can be saved for many reasons, for all the people who depend on it. There's so many apartment buildings and housing units in this area off of 65. So whatever you can do, I understand it's a lot of cuts, and I didn't realize how many people use the bus to go to CCR, I mean, to go to URI and other places. It's wonderful. I hope they're able to cut, save. Thank you.
Hi. I came to speak and support a route 67, and I don't see a drastic cut in the service. But I would like to say that I was without a car for a week recently. I don't usually ride the bus, but I used it that week. And I had a really good experience getting my shopping done because it was so convenient for Newport to go out, West Main Road, East Main Road, whatever I needed was there. I also want to say that I found an app for Ripta with a schedule on it so clear to read, so easy, I could look up any schedule, find what time, I could catch a bus, whether holiday, weekday, or whatever. I just thought it was a really well-done scheduled app for Ripta, which is ironic because they might be making quite a few changes in it soon, but anyway, it was a very good app. I just want to say that I think the more we use the bus, the better, and I hope that we don't have to face something like this again. I'm thinking of that new parking lot out there right off the bridge ramp and how many more cars could go there, and Ripta's making a stop there, an additional stop, to get less cars off the streets in Newport. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jimmy Winters, Newport. Current president of the NAACP in Newport County. The NAACP requests Ripta to keep all current bus routes to our community and to South County. Buses are necessary means of travel for the elderly, the handicapped, working-class families, students, and anyone who does not have the means to travel on the island and to other locations in our state. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Carmen Kreitz and advocating for Bus 68, which is a wonderful route that ever since it started, I have been using not to go to the library like the previous lady said. I have used it to go to the library, to the beach, or the DHS as well. So, and I'm aware of people that are handicapped, that they take it also to go to work, or the restaurants that are in the beginning of Aquinic Avenue, just so. The sound went away. The mic was low battery, so I'm back on. Anyway, even The sound went away. The mic was low battery, so I'm back on. Anyway, even to go to the, on the weekend when the buses don't come so often, 63, to get to Walmart, you can get off by the Rotary and walk to the local shops there, Stop &amp; Shop and Walmart. So it's very convenient and it's right near my house, the first stop, by Antonomi Park. So it's essential for the people from the housing that don't have access to get to the beach, they can go in the trolley in the 68. So I think it will be wonderful to save it. Thank you very much.
My name is Jack Mann. I'm from Providence. I use the bus on a daily basis and think that the cessation of so many tired users is totally uncool and would alienate groups of people that have the hands and shoes and others. Thank you. Good day.
My name is Rebecca Gomez. I'm a Jamestown resident, and I'm also the executive director of Conexión Latina Newport here on the island. I'm going to leave my fancy letter and send it to the powers that be, but I'm going to tell a quick story. My husband's family's from Peru, and 18 years ago, he applied for his sisters and nephews and nieces to come to this country. And four months ago, those that were still alive came to this country. And one of my sister-in-laws and nieces are living at my house in Jamestown. They have worked very hard to assimilate. But my niece, while she was in Peru at the age of nine, got brain cancer. And she survived, thankfully, and she is here in the United States and doing very well. But she has some continuing difficulties with balance, with mobility, and she is certainly not a candidate for driving because she doesn't know her right from her left. So she is dependent on the bus to get from Jamestown to Newport. And being able to work and to volunteer and take English classes are incredibly important to her. And so she takes the 14 and the 64 from my house to Newport pretty much every day. And those buses are both either going to be cut substantially or cut completely, especially on the weekends. So that is going to be a tremendous loss for her and for my sister-in-law. And as far as the Hispanic community in Newport, our community is very, very, very dependent on busing. They are the backbone of our industry. They work both on and off the island, and they need to be able to get around. And cutting the Bus 64 off of this island to two trips a day would be absolutely impossible for them, making Aquinic Island almost unlivable. And I also want to point out that the times where buses are being cut, which is night times and weekends, are also surge times for Ubers. So Ubers are almost twice as much money than they would be during the times when buses are actually running. So these would be really devastating to not only the Hispanic community that I represent, and this really represents building more barriers than breaking down barriers. And I really encourage our lawmakers and anybody who has any influence in this battle to do whatever they can to stop this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Barbara Henry. I live in Providence, and I'm here today because I know a few months ago, many of us in this room, we went to the State House and we advocated for Ripta to get more money. And while we were there, it was presented that there are quite a few people in this state that make quite a bit of money, and they don't pay their fair taxes. I don't know if anybody in this room remembers that, but I know that, I hope these devastating effects don't take place in September. But I felt that that bill needs to be explored more. I mean, basically, I work full-time, I'm paying the same taxes as those people are, and maybe they need to put in a little bit more of their share. I know all of us in this room that work and volunteer, we all put in our share. I also want, I'm very concerned just about all these cuts because it dictates to a person where you're going to live. It also makes you feel if you're a minority, that you don't belong in certain areas because maybe you're not the right color, you're a woman, you're disabled, and it's very hurtful. I've been at a bus stop, sometimes over an hour and a half with my son in the freezing cold, in the rain. I felt like a horrible mother, and I'm sure there are people in this room, they know where I'm coming from. It is not easy. Most people who take the bus, we don't take the bus alone, we take it with our family or, and to have your child with you and wait over an hour for a bus, it's not good, you know? The bus is for everyone. I just, thank you, Ripta, for having this meeting, and I'm sorry I got emotional. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ted Kreitz. I'm the husband of Carmen Kreitz there, and I'm just going to echo her comments and many others about the Route 68, which seems to be on the chopping block 100%, but more than half the comments in here from the people have, you know, pointed that out, that 68 is an important bus for their lifestyle. And myself, too, I take really two buses, either the 60 or the 68. 68 more than anything, almost every day. And aside from myself riding it, I see many people, like for instance, it starts right over there, it goes by Antonomi and then down Third Beach, I mean, Third Street, by the Bayside, and I see several people with shirts that say Wyndham, Long War, or Newport Harbor Hotels, and they're all hospitality people that get on the bus just to get downtown. So they're probably at work now, so they can't be here, but there's many people in the hospitality industry that use that bus route. And I use it for myself. I'm retired now, but I use it to get downtown so I avoid parking, trying to find a parking space downtown and paying 30 bucks or 40 bucks. So I hope, Ripta, thank you for doing the meeting, but I hope that you can't, you do not consider axing 68 completely. A lot of people count on that route. Thank you.
I'm Mary Alice Smith, and I live in Newport. And I've seen the impact of having the 67 bus here on reducing tourists using their cars around Newport. Sometimes when you're over by Salve, they have to wait for the next bus because there's so many people waiting to get on that bus. So the buses are important in helping us reduce the use of automobiles. We have that as a statewide goal, to reduce our carbon emissions. If we don't have an effective public transit system, we're not going to be able to meet those goals. I don't know about you, but it's really frustrating to encounter the amount of traffic that we have on our streets and highways. And from my understanding, it's the frequency of the public transit that makes it enticing to people to use and to get out of their cars. To get to what this woman from Providence talked about, it's really difficult for people in the wintertime who don't have transportation. I know I try to use public transit. I hope that we can build the ridership for Route 68 the way 67 has built, but people need to be made aware of it. And I agree with you, Irene, it's our contemporaries who are saying, what, use the bus? I love using the bus. I don't have to deal with all that traffic on Bellevue Avenue if I want to get over towards Salve for an event, or if I want to get downtown. I took it back from the Folk Festival up to my street area. So it just creates alternatives for people and gets them out of their cars. But I think what we have also in Newport is people who are mobility-challenged, who are also economically disadvantaged, who rely on these buses to be able to work, to be able to live, and we need to support that. Thank you.